This is great conversation, it's enthused. We certainly appreciate everybody being here, we certainly appreciate this gorgeous day. It's an opportunity for us and we're truly thankful. And at this time, I am calling the meeting to order. As we know, this is the first one of the month, so I am calling the meeting to order. And is Pastor Abrams here? I haven't seen him. Okay. If he's not here, we would ask that the council member Dave...
I don't mind.
...lead us with the prayer as well as with the pledge of we can stand the remainings of standing.
A bow and a prayer. That is great. My health, thank you, gracious Father, we come once again with bow and prayer, shalom and hallelujah. Thank you for such a beautiful day, a day that we never seen before in our life. We just want to thank you, Lord, for pushing our hope and strength forth, Father. And, Father, give us a heart and a mind to do your business, Lord, darling, and do it the best of our ability. And, Father, God bless each and every one here on the side of my holy voice. And, Father, we ask blessing upon the entire community, the challenged about areas. Because we all need blessings right now. And, Father, go with those folks that work for the city and put the time in keeping us safe. So, go with all of them and their families. And, Father, God bless this council as a whole, as we do the business at hand, the city. We ask thee blessing in the mighty name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Day. And again, thank you all for being here. At this time, I'd like to call on our HR Director, Stephanie Chastain, as well as our City Manager, Wallace Hunter, to do one of the highlights that we've enjoyed doing. And as we say, and you probably get time to me saying this, the most powerful thing we can do is to say thank you to a person sincerely. And this is the opportunity that this council and the leadership do this to our employees, who really makes the difference for this community.
Yes, thank you. As the mayor said, we can't say thank you enough, especially in these times. We have, you know, it's hard to find people to get in a career and stay in a career for long term, and that's especially true over the last year and a half or so. So, this truly does mean a lot to us to be able to recognize employees for their service and dedication to the city. So, we'll go ahead and get started with our utilities department. We have Christopher Wade with five years of service. You're more than welcome to say a few words if you'd like to do so.
Hello. How are you? I would like to thank everyone for the city for giving me an opportunity to be a employee at Phoenix City 32. And I would like to give another five years of love and praise.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
With our library, we have Brittany Smith with 10 years of service. Now, she's actually got 15 total years with the library. She worked five years before the library came under the city's management, and they were independently ran. So, she's actually been there for 15 years, but we're going to recognize her for 10 years of service with the city.
I just want to appreciate everybody for this opportunity. I'm hoping to be here a little bit longer, maybe another 10 years or so, but I just want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then with our economic development, we have our own Sean Coligan with 10 years of service. Nicole, not the same he said yesterday since he's on camera now.
You won't catch me doing that. Mayor, City Council, Stephanie Emmerich, thank you for this. I certainly appreciate it. I was just about to turn 24 when I started with the city. I was young, fresh out of college, green, and unmarried and no kids. And now, 10 years later, I look back and I'm married with four kids, and life's a whole lot different than it was at the beginning. I promise you that. But I am, the city's been a blessing to me, to my family, and I'm certainly grateful for it. I'll tell you that it's given me an opportunity to grow and to learn, and it's given me an opportunity to build a career. And it's also given an opportunity to make mistakes and to learn from those mistakes. And so, thank you for sticking with me and believing in me through that. I appreciate it. And I'll tell you a quick story. The most running I've ever done in my entire life was when I was in high school, playing against Central High School, and we got back and ran more than I can tell you. I think if one person would have quit, I would have been number two. And so, luckily, nobody did, but I say that to say that, I said, "I'm never going to step foot in this city ever again." So, to say that God has a sense of humor, not only did I, so I met the woman I would call my wife a few years later, who's from here. And then, not only do I work for the city, I sell the city every day. So, I've met some of the greatest people that I would ever imagine from this city.
I would like to call Sean. I just want to say thank you for the opportunities they've given to me to come back to Phoenix City and to serve the people of Phoenix City, Russell County, and all that. I've enjoyed the training that I've been given, and hopefully, then in the future, I'll be able to continue benefiting the people of Phoenix City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Chastain, Mr. Hunter. And again, on behalf of this entire council, we do sincerely say thank you all, and we certainly want to encourage you all to get those other years in. It's a great retirement. As these years has passed for you all, they will continue to pass more quickly. So, we do want to encourage you all just to hang in there, and you all truly, truly make a difference each and every day for this community and the people in this community. And we sincerely say thank you to all of you all. And as I always say in this group, that's when we meet, always hear me say this, please keep your heart in what you're doing, and when you do that, we're going to do it right, we're going to do it wholesome, and we're going to be able to lift this community as you all have done and as we all have done. So, thank you all so much for that, and we do want to encourage you to do those other years to get to that retirement part, because it's a great, great retirement system. Thank you all so much. And now, council proceeding on. At this time, I would like to ask the council for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the August, excuse me, October 18th work session, as well as October the 19th council meeting. And at the pleasure of this council, we will take those in one vote. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of this work session on the 18th of October, as well as the council meeting on the 19th of October. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Day. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Gordon. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council. At this time, are there any unfinished business? Okay. There seems to be none. We will proceed on with the resolutions. And on the administration, council, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to sign and enter into a contract with San City Lofts LLC to purchase property located at 1209 and 1211 Seventh Avenue in an amount not to exceed $470,000. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City is in need of additional office space to support the city's growing employment. And whereas the City of Phoenix City has identified property for purchase at 1209 and 1211 Seventh Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama. And whereas the parcel information for the property is 57-05-06-14-2-201.059.000, 57-05-06-14-2-201-057.000, And whereas the city would like to enter into a contract with San City Lofts LLC for the purchase of this above referenced property for a total of $470,000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract with San City Lofts LLC for the purchase of property located at 1209 and 1211 Seventh Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36867, and more particularly described in a proposed contract for sale of real estate between San City Lofts LLC seller and the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as purchaser, in an amount not to exceed $470,000. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November 2021.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've all heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion from Councilman Gordy. Do may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson?
Okay.
Okay, we have the motion and second. Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And proceeding on on the administration, council, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing Alabama Power to install 153 Watts roadway fixtures on 16th Avenue on pole number 6-048851. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alabama Power to install the following street light and pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the street lights as follows. Install 153W roadway fixture on 16th Avenue on pole number 6-048851. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November 2021.
Okay. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second, council?
Second.
Second by Councilman Day. Comments or discussion? That W does stand for Watts, doesn't it? Okay, so I am okay to say that. Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Okay. We have the motion and the second. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on on the administrations, is a resolution in reference to authorizing Alabama Power to install 153 Watts Phillips fixtures at 4907 Somerville Road. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alabama Power to install the following street lights and pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the street lights as follows. Install 153W Phillips fixture at 4907 Somerville Road. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Council, we've heard the resolution. I would at this time like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion by Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordy. Council, comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council, is a resolution in reference to approving the final settlement in the matter of a claim filed by State Farm and Casualty Company versus Joshua Geiger and the City of Phoenix City et al. in the amount of $3,616. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept and approve of the proposed settlement regarding the claim filed by State Farm Fire Casualty Company versus Joshua Geiger and the City of Phoenix City et al. in the amount of $3,616, and does further authorize payment therefore. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November 2021.
Okay. Council, we've all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask, council, for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, there are not any. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And proceeding on now, council, on the resolution for administration, is a resolution in reference to filing an application with ALDOT for funding assistance from the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program -2, also known as ATRIP -2, for street lights and fiber installation upgrades along US Highway 280 from South Railroad Street to US 431 South. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to rehabilitating and improving local transportation infrastructure for its citizens. And whereas the City of Phoenix City is committed to addressing critical needs in our transportation system, such as safety, connectivity, and economic impact. And whereas evidenced by that commitment, the city wishes to make application to the Alabama Department of Transportation, ALDOT, for funding assistance from the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation and Improvement Program -2, ATRIP -2, for street lighting and connectivity improvements along US Highway 280 from Pierce Road to US 431 South. And whereas the Engineering Department, along with the Alabama Department of Transportation Traffic Design Division, has developed a preliminary scope of work and cost which is estimated to be $1,995,213.13. And whereas if the grant application is approved, the project will be funded 100% with state funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City hereby authorizes the filing of said application, including all understandings and assurances contained therein, and directs and authorizes its mayor and city manager to act in connection with the application and to provide such additional information to ALDOT as may be required. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November 2021.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution from our clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second, council?
Second.
Second by Councilman Day. Council, comments or discussion?
Only comment, yesterday, if I remember right, Ms. Angel said that there was something, Phoenix City is unique in putting in for this. Didn't you say something to that yesterday?
Yes, sir, based off of street lighting and fiber connection. So, we are unique in this type of project.
Okay. So, that would give us, hopefully, maybe a good chance of getting this. All right, thank you. I remember that yesterday, but I couldn't remember what you, exactly what it pertained to. Thank you.
And I forgot to mention yesterday, which I intended, looking at what Mrs. Moore and her department put together. They did a great job selling the story when you read it of why we need this. And so, I mean, it was really good. I really enjoyed reading it, because you all had, every detail was really heightened, in my opinion. So, we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, hopefully, we can get this, because again, how long has those posts been out there? When posed, do we know this, Hunter? About 40 years?
It may be a long time.
Maybe longer.
I think that will...
So, hopefully, this would brighten, heighten our community again. Thank you all so much. Any other comments or discussion?
I just want to concur with what you said, Mayor. I just was reviewing the scope of the project, so broad, and Phoenix City will be, will benefit so much from this project if it come to fruition. It's been a long time coming, and I think we just want to thank the city staff for working on this and getting the proposal out there for this grant, for this project. It really going to mean a lot for Phoenix City, so we thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Moore. Any other comments or discussion? Not at this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, proceeding on on the building department, we have three resolutions and public notices in reference to setting public hearing dates and fixing demolition costs associated with the following properties located in Phoenix City, 1013 15th Avenue, 1205 16th Avenue, and 119 14th Court. At this time, council, I would ask the clerk to read one master resolution and also the public notice, and at the pleasure of the council, we will take all of these in one vote, okay? Our minds clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been informed by the building official of the city that substandard structures at the following locations in Phoenix City were in need of demolition or removal, 1013 15th Avenue, 1205 16th Avenue, 119 14th Court. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has solicited seal bids as required by Alabama law, and the apparent low bidders meeting the specifications required for the demolition of the substandard structures are as follows. The amount listed below includes dumping fees. 1013 15th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $8,100. 1205 16th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $5,200. 119 14th Court, J&amp;J Land Development Incorporated, $4,200. Whereas the city is required by law to give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes before the final fixing of cost and a copy of the resolution is to be published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a newspaper of local and general publication in Russell County, Alabama. And whereas the building official of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was authorized to proceed with the demolition and/or removal of the substandard structure with the apparent low bidder at the approved bid price. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city clerk give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes, and a copy of this resolution be published in the Citizen of East Alabama newspaper, one time before the final fixing of cost and establishment of a special assessment upon the property as required by law. Two, that the date for fixing of cost before the city council shall be December the 7th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in the Martin Arnold Park Community Center. Three, that if such public hearings, any person interested in this property, as well as the person last assessed for ad valorem taxes, should appear and give reason, if any, why the city council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost of the demolition or removal of the substandard structure, which the owner of the property had either failed or refused to do after it had become a public danger or health hazard. Four, the cost of demolition for each structure as listed above shall be levied against each property as a special assessment and shall constitute a lien against the property to be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office of Russell County, Alabama. The council notes that the parcel identification number for each property is listed on the public notice and the individual resolution for each property. Five, that the property owner as shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama, for each property is as follows. 1013 15th Avenue, Lisenda Griffin Wiggins, Attention Bid St. B. Wiggins, 70 LeRoe 2100, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36870. 1205 16th Avenue, State of Alabama, 2018 Tax Sale, State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104. 119 14th Court, Edna R. Tolbert and Jimmy Roll, 3806 Clyde Drive, Jacksonville, Florida, 32208. The public notice reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on December the 7th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in the Martin Arnold Park Community Center, 3743 Moonlight Drive, to consider the fixing of cost incurred by the City of Phoenix City for the demolition and/or removal of substandard buildings or structures at the following locations, 1013 15th Avenue, 1205 16th Avenue, 119 14th Court. The legal description would follow. Any person, firm, or corporation having any interest in the above described property should appear before council at aforementioned time and place if they have any objections as to why the fixing of cost for the removal of the substandard building or structure should not be assessed as a lien against the property taxes upon which the substandard building or structure was located. This the second day of November 2021.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Catch a breath? Council, we've all heard the reading of the master resolution, as well as the public notice. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we do have a motion for Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordy. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
And proceeding on, council, on the building department, we do have a public hearing and approval of three resolutions in reference to the fixing of cost incurred by the City of Phoenix City for the removal of substandard structures and the establishment of special assessments upon property located at 1004 Second Street South, 1004 Fourth Street South, 1001 Fourth Street South. At this time, council, I would like to declare this as a public hearing, and if there's anyone out in the audience that would like to come and address the council in reference to these substandards and removal of structure, now is the time to do so. Either you can call in at 334-448-2718. Again, if there's anyone that would like to come and address council in reference to these removal of these structures, as well as calling in at 334-448-2718. Now is the time to do so. Just making sure the phone is turned up. Again, that number is 334-448-2718. It seems to be no one stepping forward, so we'll give it a few, couple minutes, council, to see if anyone would call in. And I would like to repeat that phone number, 334-448-2718. Okay, since no one has stepped forward here physically, and since no one has called in on that number that we've just given out, I am declaring this public hearing closed. And with that, I would like to call upon the clerk. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was requested by the building official of the city to authorize the...
Okay. This is the Phoenix City Council meeting. Hello?
I am pleased to be calling.
Hello?
I would like to call one of the clerks.
Uh, hello?
Yes, I was trying to call in, but the mayor just announced in regard to the demolition of 1004.
Yes, ma'am.
It's the council.
Okay, you're on the speakerphone, so the rest of the council can also hear you, as well as our city manager and our clerk.
Yes.
Now, excuse me, is it, this? Now, excuse me, is this the 1004 Fourth Street South?
Yes, sir.
1004, correct? Mrs. Robbins?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed.
I just wanted to note again that I object to the demolition of this building.
Mrs. Robbins, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. This is the mayor alone, and we do notice, have noticed, that you came and spoke with us a couple months ago, maybe, give or take a few days. And the position, as we told you at that time, still stands. This process had been started, and we're at the point, as we all collectively explain to you, that we cannot stop this process, and we had to proceed with it.
The mayor alone. Okay, I watched this live on YouTube, and it seems that there is a delay in what you are... are saying versus what Mayor Lo is saying, so I don't know.
I am Mayor Lo, but as far as the delay, this is the process and the delay, as we said to you, was, I think it was a couple of months ago, give or take a few days when you were here. And again, I just want to stress, Mrs. Robbins, that that position still stands. So as far as a delay from the perspective of how we follow the law of the land, the position still stands as it is.
Okay, so I called in because...
You have another minute now, so we'll give you a couple of minutes, but go ahead.
Well, apparently there's been nothing else that I can say, so you open up the phone line for people to object, which I'm trying to do, but at the end, there is no object to grant it because there's nothing I can say, so it was not really necessary even that I could call in overall.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you. Again, I stated that we follow the law of the land, so you do have the right to speak up at this public hearing as you did at the last one we had a couple of months ago with you. But we have the fiduciary responsibility to give you as well as every person that opportunity. But again, I do want to say the position still stands the same. We followed, again, the law of the land and at this point, know there would be no objections that we will grant.
Okay.
Okay?
Unfortunately, nothing else I can say.
Thank you so much.
Okay, goodbye.
Bye-bye. Do we need to wait, counsel, for the see if anyone else will call in or should we just proceed on? I mean, there's plenty of time. Okay, so with that, at this time, we will turn it back over to our clerk. Mrs. Lee, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, was requested by the building official of the city to authorize the demolition and removal of substandard structures at the following locations in Phoenix City. 1004 Second Street South, 1004 Fourth Street South, 1001 Fourth Street South. Whereas the city council on the 20th day of July, 2021, by Resolution Number 2021-145, Resolution Number 2021-146, and Resolution 2021-147, approved the apparent low bid to demolish and/or remove said substandard structures located on each property listed above. And whereas the city has given notice by certified or registered mail to the person or persons last assessed for ad valorem taxes for each property and a notice has been published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a local newspaper of general circulation, at least 15 days before this final hearing for the fixing of cost for each property. And whereas after giving all interested parties an opportunity at this public hearing to address council on this the second day of November, 2021, on the issue of the fixing of cost in these cases, the city council believes the fixing of cost have been determined and that they should be assessed against the substandard structures as named above and reported in the probate office to protect the interest of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the final cost and removal of the substandard structures at the following locations are as follows. 1004 Second Street South, $8,500. 1004 Fourth Street South, $4,100. 1001 Fourth Street South, $5,100. Two, that the city clerk file a certified copy of each resolution with the probate judge of Russell County, Alabama, to establish a special assessment that shall constitute a lien of Phoenix City, Alabama, upon each property that shall be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Russell County, Alabama. Three, that the legal description for each property is listed on each individual resolution for that particular property as taken from the records of the Revenue Commissioner's Office at Russell County. Four, that the property owners listed below for each property are as shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama. 1004 Second Street South, State of Alabama, 2016 Tax, State Capitol Building, Montgomery, Alabama, 36104. 1004 Fourth Street South, Jaren E. James, Caro, 1004 Fourth Street South, LLC, 8058 35th Avenue, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33710. 1001 Fourth Street South, Dwayne Gauche, Theo Box, 2514, Phoenix City, Alabama, 36868. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we have heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion for Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary-Louise?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, counsel, on the Parks and Recreation Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the Phoenix City School System to partner with Pyrotechnico to perform a firework display with no boom at Garrett-Harrison Stadium during the remainder of the 2021 football season starting November the 5th, 2021. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, is hosting an AHSAA football game, playoff game, at Garrett-Harrison Stadium on Friday, November the 5th, 2021. And whereas the city could also play host to the second and third rounds of the playoffs on subsequent Friday nights depending on what happens in other games in the region. And whereas the city does wish to create a favorable home field advantage for the Central High School football team by allowing the Phoenix City School System to partner with Pyrotechnico, a licensed pyrotechnician company, to display fireworks at each of the playoff games. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the Phoenix City School System to partner with Pyrotechnico to perform a firework display with no boom at Garrett-Harrison Stadium during the remainder of the 2021 football season starting November the 5th, 2021. Passed, approved, and adopted the second day of November, 2021.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolutions. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
That's motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. We have the motion and the second, counsel, any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, we discussed this at length yesterday, but for the people that are watching, what we're doing is we're authorizing this to be done on the basis that they follow the guidelines that we put out, which I want the citizens to understand is no noises. It's a firework display, it's gonna be like flares up in the air, but we're doing this based off the fact that there's no noises because in the past, we've had problems with that and we don't want those, we don't want to create those problems again. And so, we're passing, if we pass this resolution, it will be passed based on the fact that the fire chief agrees with the conditions that we've laid out and that they're going to follow those conditions. So I want to make that clear, you know, and how we're handling this for everyone that's listening.
Yeah, and as he stated, we had great discussion on this yesterday because again, it just, it just proves to me and it should prove to our community that we are transparent and we try to do the right thing and try to make sure we can continue. I'm gonna use this phrase, have a home field advantage for this football game, but a home field advantage for this community. So with that, I would ask that Mr. Hunt, City Manager, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. Chief, would you give a report you gave in this morning and make sure you tell them what you said.
Yes. So after the meeting that we had yesterday with council, I informed Ms. White of Pyrotechnico once again that I could not sign off on anything other than the gerbs or the sparklers. If it made a noise, a loud boom, backfire, pop, anything of that nature, I absolutely could not sign off on it. So I get back in an email, a description of what the mines are supposed to sound like, which everyone who was up there yesterday with the demo said no, with the city. They even said, Pyrotechnico even said it was louder than what they thought it was supposed to be. So outside of the gerbs, I told her I could not sign off on it. The gerbs are gonna be nothing more than a light show, if you will. But she also has included the mines again, so...
So where does it stand now? Have the superintendent been contacted or anyone contacted?
That I don't know.
Has anyone?
At this point in time, I give the fire chief instructions to shut it down.
Well, we're not gonna allow it.
So we have, we're still seeking, we need permission if there's to come to their senses. If they don't...
Well, my thing is we can still pass the resolution.
Yes, correct.
And they can make the changes and we can allow them to operate. We go to the fire chief, not going to allow anything that's not, that's not even allowed.
Yeah, we still want permission, but we want you all to know, we give them the opportunity to make changes already.
Well, we've done this for two weeks now.
Yes, so if the changes are not made today, chief has the instructions to shut it down.
Which he has the authority based on what to do. But again, this council is knowing what is right, but yet instead, we're gonna follow the instruction of our chief of fire department.
Well, if they're giving you a reason that they keep putting them back in there? Would you scratch them out and then put them back and you scratch them out and you put them back? And it doesn't even make sense that they would keep putting them...
Not when they've been told.
Back into the formula, knowing that that's the first thing you're gonna take out again. That don't even make sense with them. That's what I'm saying, not with us, but with them. It doesn't make sense.
Whereas Mr. Wilks is on board with us, with the city, is that right? Well, he's, I'll be honest with you, whether he's on board or not, it's good that he's on board. I want public...
But we need to make sure.
But it leaves that perimeter at a certain point and it has left that perimeter. Once the fire chief, park secretary director informed them of what they need to do on several different occasions.
But I was just, was a suggestion, but I know you all will feel it, that superintendent needs to know.
Sure. I mean, for a reason, they won't take it out, so, I mean, they've been told we're not gonna sign off on it if it is still in there.
It sounds like it's financially not worth them to do it or something unless they can include more. I mean, it's what it sounds like, that's why they keep pushing.
I don't necessarily think it's about finances because the, one of the people I've been talking to said they were donating their services, so I don't think it has anything to do with money.
It does, and Representative Blackshear told me that also, that it, the money deal, they was giving a big break on the money deal and so you're right about that.
Well, I can't figure out what in the world, why they would keep putting it back in there if they're willing to almost do it for free, but they keep putting it in there, well, they know they don't get it too.
Yeah, but you gotta follow the rules and guidelines and regulations.
We're gonna do it our way or it's not gonna get done, is what it amounts to. It has to be for the citizens of this area and the people that live around here and it's what we, whether we pay a little more or a lot for it, it's still, we're paying for it, so therefore it's supposed to be what we order. You know, you go out to dinner, you wanna get what you paid for. When you get a meal, you don't want the meal to keep coming with, you know, with fries if you, you know, if you order some coleslaw. You know, you're gonna keep sending it back to their finance, saying, yeah, your coleslaw. That's what it amounts to. And that's what this company's doing, that they keep giving us an order that we're not ordering.
It's gotta be something, it's something else is going on, like I said on yesterday. There's something else that's going, there's another influence somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I think.
We rushed out to make sure that this thing could work. Parks Secretary Director, like the fire chief, park secretary director, myself met on this issue to make sure that everybody see we can work together and superintendent on board with everything to take care of that. And he has some people that's handling some of the business himself, so he will be informed again.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
He's always informed though, the whole works, and he's always been in direct contact with Parks Secretary Director with this, so, yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Hunt, the person, uh, chief, the person they keep putting it back in there, who does she work for? They work for?
They got their own private business, but what's gonna happen is they won't have a place to do this at once they arrive here. If that's not signed off, then the people will be in place to make sure that they don't do this because it look like it's a force of will here, a matter that we're gonna do, wanna do in Phoenix City and that's not gonna happen.
Mr. Gordon, you have anything else?
I just, you know, I feel like, I need to say that if we pass this resolution and the fireworks don't take place, I feel like I want, I just want to address that unfortunately, the fire chief and the parks and reg are gonna catch heat on this. And it's not fair because what we've tried to do, especially in light of what happened years ago, is we've tried to come to a compromise, make the football team, give them the advantages of fireworks, but also at the same time, respect the people that were affected last time.
Exactly.
And so I feel like we've done our due diligence in doing that and I just think it's unfair that the people that have worked to try to make this happen would ultimately be known as the bad guys in this situation and it's just not right. So I appreciate what you guys have done, Todd, Chief Kennedy, and also you, city manager, because, you know, when this was brought to our attention, it was one of those things where like, man, do we even wanna, because it was such a big issue in the past. I just wanted to say that and just, you know, stand up for you guys and what the job that you've done. Maybe it will work out, maybe we can make the solution work out, but I think we let it known that we would pass it with the gerbs and that's it. And we've said that enough times to where it can be done if it wants to be done that way.
And what people gotta understand, because, you know, I caught a lot of heat in 2014. What people need to understand is, fire chief, when you serve in that capacity, you're a direct agent from the state fire marshal office. You basically work there and that's what I tried to tell them back in 214, so anything that goes wrong, you are the person, the final signee that's responsible for what goes on with the fire, your community and all works. And that's been explained to people several times. Pyro people even know that, they understand that. And with us having that in place and working, I don't know how we get to this spot again with this being the type of concentration, but I will say this, no matter what heat comes, you can live and survive from it.
For doing the right thing.
You will, for doing what you're supposed to do. That weight does fall upon your responsibilities.
Yeah, that's why we have a ordinance, chief, is against it so that, or so that the city can have control over it. That's city property and so when it's spelled out that this is what you can and you can't do, why does someone keep putting it right back in there or they won't take it out? So like you're gonna say, it must be a matter of will, so...
We're gonna follow the law of the land, as I said earlier, and I do want to say this and I appreciate Councilman Gordon bringing this up, when this first came up and the city manager talked to me about it, let me tell you, he really, really struggled with it because he did not want to put the city or his department people in a position knowing that there would be some blowback. And so, Mr. Gordon, I appreciate you saying that. So I do want to say this as respectfully as I can, we don't need to send no emails or in-office mails or phone calls to these department heads or the city manager or this council on this. We are being forthright and transparent, publicly transparent of what we are going to do and we have to follow the law of the land and that's the only way to do it. So I commend and appreciate that, Mr. Gordon, but we don't need to mess with the workers of this community. They don't need any email, voicemail, in-office mail, any other kinds of mail, Facebook or whatever, or even the city manager. But I do know that when this first came to his attention and we talked, he really, it really kind of sunk him down because he knows what the past experience was and he did not want to have to put his people or this city or himself in that situation. So we're trying to do the right thing.
And it's tough, I'm gonna tell you, when you're trying, when you have certain systems in this community, you always want the school system and the city to be on good working relationships, just like our authority, just like the major agencies here, the DHR, all of them. You always want to make sure you have a good relationship with that so people can see what's going on. And so many uninformed people in the public have gotten away there, so disrespectful now to the department heads, you know, whether it's council and else. Everybody's got to, if you live in this community, you gotta be held accountable also for the respect that you show other people and you just gonna jump on the bandwagon and have just chaos going on and that's what will happen when these type things go on. And there's bad relationships that can spin off from that. At the same time, the public don't see when those relationships are amended and healed and people are moving forward. And I can tell you, me and Representative Blackshear had a full blowout about this seven years ago, but what people don't see, we're on the phone talking to each other three and four times a week now and working to make better things. He's directly involved with this $2 million that we're getting and talking about this relationship because when you're really serving the city and you serving to try to make sure things move forward, just like what Sean was explaining and talking about earlier. because when you're really serving the city and you serving to try to make sure things move forward, just like what Sean was explaining and talking about earlier, you don't have time, some might derail you for a few seconds, but you gotta get right back on track and get on board to try to make sure things move. And just like this dilemma and what's going on, 'cause I'm quite sure, I see Todd back there texting now, he's probably texting him. And Wilks has great relationships, so I'm quite sure that he's making sure he's informed on things. But I think for the pub, general public that's watching this right now, they gotta understand, we have relationships all the time. Like you're saying, sometimes we, we might bump heads, might go a different way, but if you're not of the mindset that you gotta get this straightened out to move forward, that's what causes a cloud in the system and causes a problem. And we will work this out sometime today, and whichever way it's gonna happen or not happen, but we, I want people to know, we are working for a, a, a positive solution towards it. We want it to happen, we went out, we want things to happen, we want it to happen the way they have it set up and the capability to make it happen. Not, not that force of will or we're just gonna do what we want to, and then we have to deal with the general public that's right around in this area where we are hosting this meeting at right now. There's a way to do things, and we have went out the way to get it taken care of. But when you are in that with certain responsibilities and you have to sign your, put your signature and your career to this, you know, and, and, and the public need to understand, it's not just a matter of somebody's trying to show that they have authority or power, because we are beaten down constantly because of the things you're responsible for. And, and nobody's sitting here, when, when, when you went, when Dr. Gordon went to school at University of Alabama up there, and he decided, I'm in love with taking care of people's psyche, whatever, that particular profession showed you your capabilities and what you could make and what you could earn in that profession that you love over a, a lifetime. And intervals of five to 10 years and what you, that career could pay you. Now, you lose your license, and you can't get a license anywhere for that. That's no difference than the same thing of responsibility as, as Fire Chief, where he agree, and as Fire Science and Business Manager and everything else, that, or engineer or anyone else. It has something on there, this is the way you will be rewarded, this, in this particular profession, if you could maintain that integrity and dignity of this, because if you don't, these are the things that's gonna happen to you. And let me tell you, another thing that people don't understand in our profession that goes on, when you talk about what goes along with our great retirement system and everything, with what the laws is in place now, as far as it's good, doing the wrong thing and a verdict going against you in any kind of manner, federal or whatever, they take away your retirement. So it's, when, when you're doing your job, you have a lot more to think about as far as your investment in your profession and in this community than worrying about people being managed. You know, or somebody throwing bags and dirt on your lawn or here and there, whatever, this stuff, I've been through it all. You know, it's, it's part of what goes with the job, but as long as you're doing what you're supposed to do and following the things that you have to follow, like we have to from the city clerk's office all the way through having attorneys with us everywhere we go to make sure we follow the law. We, we don't want this thing, but already, as I could say, I've been talking five minutes or more now, it's already caused problems. So we're gonna do our best to try to resolve.
Well, Mr. Huns, as I sit here and listen to what has already been said, I concur with everything been said, even it's not cheap. I remember when I came on council about nine years ago, I remember when all that heat came from this community right up here, when that fireworks going on. We had a lot of heat that came down on the city at that time, I remember that. And as long as we go according to the laws and they've been put in place, I think we'll be safe. We gotta follow the rules, we gotta follow the laws, where the state got a lot as well. And that's what we're gonna do.
Lord knows, we didn't want none of this to be a problem, that's why we jumped on so fast to try to make sure it wouldn't be one. But right now, I think it, it, it's in the hand of the fire checking people, that's what, that's what we're gonna do.
No questions.
Provide what we ask for.
Yes, sir.
Well, we just gonna do it right the first time, and let me say this, a couple of things, since we're talking about this. To all the department heads, to all of us and to this council, and we always talk about, this gig is not easy. One thing that we ought to all be able to live with, if people hate us and dislike us because we're doing the right, we should be able to bear that and, and wear with badge of honor. And we talk about authority, and I always use analogies, you know, beginning, it may sound crazy, but it makes sense to me, is that, you know, authority is like soap, the more you use it, the real, you realize you don't have it. So, but you gotta do it for the right reason, and that's what Chief Kennedy is doing with her authority for the right reason. And we are gonna continue to do what's right, we're gonna have public transparency, as we've all preached about this council, and we do that and we will continue to do that. Not saying we always agree, but we do handle that in a very respectful and sensitive manner, so thank you.
And Mayor, to go along with that, I thought that it's deep, because even with you all's approval today and the application from the State Fire Marshal's office, even after all of those approvals, the State Fire Marshal takes it right back to that signature of the Fire Chief and the Public Safety Director. It takes it, that's from the head office in the state of Alabama. So they take, no matter what they sound, they still put that responsibility back to you.
We appreciate what you all are doing, and I hope that the citizens see how magnitude this is as far as following the law of the land. So thank you all so much, and with that, Mrs. Lee, you had, you got to just start it, my friend.
Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And Council proceeding on on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign change order one with Oracle Elevator in the amount of $3,800 to perform elevator jack replacement work at the Public Safety Building over a weekend to avoid disruption during normal business hours. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number 2021-168 was approved to enter into an agreement with Oracle Elevator Company for the modernization of the Phoenix City Public Safety Building's elevator in the amount of $120,960. And whereas part of the elevator modernization will require a new jack to be installed, which if done during normal business hours will significantly disrupt activities in the Public Safety Building. And whereas to limit disruption of activities in the Public Safety Building, while the aforementioned jack replacement work is underway, it has been determined that a change order is necessary more specifically as follows. Change Order Number One, Elevator Jack Work Performed Over Weekend With Additional $3,800. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama does hereby authorize the mayor's city manager to sign Change Order Number One for said elevator jack work over the weekend in the amount of $3,800 to avoid disruption of activities during normal business hours. Passed, approved and adopted this second day of November 2021.
Thank you. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please, may I have a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion, Counsel? Okay, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And also, Council proceeding on on the Police Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign and enter into a contract agreement with the Phoenix City Housing Authority for professional services. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama and Phoenix City Housing Authority desires to enter into an agreement, and whereas it would be a benefit to the Phoenix City Housing Authority and the City of Phoenix City to enter into a contract for professional services and have a contract agreement between the Phoenix City Police Department and the Phoenix City Housing Authority. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager has authorized and officials are hereby authorized and directed to sign the necessary documents for the above referenced contract agreement with the Phoenix City Housing Authority. Passed, approved and adopted this second day of November 2021.
Okay. Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve or deny, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Right then, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And next, Counsel on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and the city managers to sign a proposal with GTEC, Geotechnical Testing and Environmental Consultants, for geotechnical boring and environmental assessment for wetlands for the Saddle Brook Sewer Upgrades Project in an amount not to exceed $8,900. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas an existing lift station north of the Saddle Brook subdivision from which sanitary sewer overflows, SSOs, have occurred, needs to be replaced or eliminated. And whereas Constantine Engineering is designing the Saddle Brook Sewer Upgrades Project that will be a gravity sanitary sewer main to allow the elimination of said lift station. And whereas geotechnical warings and environmental assessment for wetlands are needed for said project. And whereas GTEC Geotechnical Testing and Environmental Consultants has submitted a quote for geotechnical warings and environmental assessment for wetlands in an amount not to exceed $8,900. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign a proposal from GTEC Geotechnical Testing and Environmental Consultants for the proposed geotechnical warings and environmental assessment for wetlands for the Saddle Brook Sewer Upgrades Project in an amount not to exceed $8,900. Passed, approved and adopted this second day of November 2021.
Thank you so much. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. I'd like to, at this time, ask for a motion for, uh, to approve or deny, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon, may I have a second, Counsel?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey, comments or discussion, Counsel?
Uh, yes, um, when they drill down five feet, two and a half foot, um, they tested how they go or how they, how that is. They gotta go down to, up to 10 feet here.
Councilman Day, excuse me, Councilman Day, what they're gonna be doing there is they're gonna be taking soil samples at so many feet, and what they're trying to do is they're trying to determine what type of soil, rock, sediment they'll inquire as they're digging during this project. That way they know how to proceed and letting the contract move and the bid specifications they might encounter during this, um, project.
What they are going down, well, what is it, up to 10 feet? What that, what do that mean, up to 10 feet, are they going down?
Yes, sir, it'll be going down. 'Cause also while they're taking this soil sample as well, they'll be checking the water table as well, 'cause if you got a heavy amount of water in the ground also, that'll determine if they need pumps to be pumping out where they're digging at while they're running this sewer line forwards.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other comments or discussion? If not, at this time, Counsel, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. And Counsel proceeding on on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and the city managers to sign and enter into a three-year agreement with Denali Water Solutions to haul bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama wishes to extend an agreement for removal of bio solids from the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas the previous agreement was approved by Resolution Number 2017-252 on the seventh day of November 2017 via in between Wright Recycle Systems Southeast LLC and the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. And whereas Recycle Systems Southeast LLC was bought out by Denali Water Solutions in early 2021 and has been hauling the sludge for the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas Denali Water Solutions presents, presently operates a bio solids class B land application program located in Lee County, Alabama, and has in place such facilities and other land application sites permitted by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management as shall be necessary to dispose of the volume of bio solids as contracted for herein. And whereas Phoenix City desires to engage Denali Water Solutions to accept the bio solids generated by the Phoenix City Wastewater Treatment Plant and to cause said bio solids to be removed from Phoenix City's premises under said agreement, and Denali Water Solutions is willing to do so. And whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to have a three-year term contract which can be renewed by two consecutive one-year agreements if mutually agreed upon by both parties. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a three-year agreement with Denali Water Solutions. Passed, approved and adopted this second day of November 2021.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, may I ask for a motion to approve or deny, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson, may I have a second, Counsel?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey, comments or discussion, Counsel? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, Counsel, we do have a first reading. It's a letter of request from Planning Commission, public notice and ordinance to rezone 0.47 acres of land located at 3100 South Railroad Street from an AO zone to a C3 zone, Catarang Properties LLC is the owner. At this time, I'd like to call for Mrs. Lee to do first reading, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, the letter is dated October the 27th, 2021, to mayor and council members regarding the rezonation of 0.47 plus or minus acres, excuse me, located at 3100 South Railroad Street, Catarang Properties LLC owner. The Planning Commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, October the 26th, 2021, to consider the request of Catarang Properties LLC, owner of 0.47 plus or minus acres located at 3100 South Railroad Street, to be rezoned from an AO zone apartment and office district to a C3 zone neighborhood commercial district. It is the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this request will rezoned be approved by the City Council, signed by Pat Howard Chairman and Eliza Phillips Secretary. The public notice and the ordinance read as follows. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to requests made by the Planning Commission of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the seventh day of December at 9:00 a.m. Eastern Standard Time at the Martin Island Lower Park Community Center located at 3743 Midlake Drive, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. An ordinance, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City. Section one, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the 17th day of September 2002, be amended so that the following tract of land be located in a C3 zone neighborhood commercial district instead of an AO zone apartment office district. Property is 0.47 plus or minus acres located at 3100 South Railroad Street, Catarang Properties LLC owner. And the legal description follows. At said meeting, all persons desiring to be heard concerning the rezoning of the above described property may appear before the Council of the aforementioned time and place to be heard. Passed, approved, uh, excuse me, passed, approved and adopted this second day of November 2021.
Okay, it happens. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the first reading, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept this letter to approve the public notice and also to place this ordinance on first reading. May I have a motion?
Uh, motion at this time.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon, comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Counsel Member Day?
Yes.
Counsel Member Johnson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Bailey?
Yes.
Counsel Member Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes. Thank you. And now, Counsel, at this time, we'd like to call on our attorney, Mr. Jimmy Graham.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, Counsel, we have three claims on the agenda today. The first claim filed by Willie Yates from a call. This claim, upon my recommendation, was tabled on the 19th of October until today. This claim, upon my recommendation, was tabled on the 19th of October until today. We haven't finished our due diligence in investigating this claim because it's significant claims, and some of the allegations are about settling the house settling and that kind of thing. And we're just going to ask that if they table one more time, where we can have a report for you the next week.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, we'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of his recommendation.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion. Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
The next claim is filed by, I have a hard time reading this. I think it's Kiara Moffett. She lives at Fort Mitchell, Alabama, on 9/17/2021. She hit a pothole that damaged her tire rim bumper on her vehicle. We did have notice of that pothole, but we didn't have time to get out there and fix it before she hit it. She submitted three estimates as required, the lowest being $1,052 to Ben's Body Works. And my recommendation is to pay that, this claim in that amount.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard our attorney's recommendation. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
The last one, Mayor, is filed by Mr. Kenneth Inglis. Mr. Inglis also hit a pothole that cut the sidewall of his tire. The tire itself wasn't repairable, so he had to buy a new tire. And he submitted three claims as required, the lowest being $17412 to Tire Rack. I would recommend that we pay this claim also because, again, it was a pothole that we'd gotten notice of, but we just couldn't get out there fast enough to replace it before we hit it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to comment on these last two. It's not that we're being negligent and not getting out there, but as you well know, a lot of you know, our workforce is down, and we just don't have enough employees to get out there the day that we're notified to get these fixed. And unfortunately, you know, some people hit on the phone to get out there and do what we need to do.
Thank you, Kiara, ma'am. But we do know that, and we appreciate you reiterating that, and it's real, and, you know, it's part of the environment that we're all in in this country. So, with that, again, we'd like to thank you all so much, the department head. Let's continue to do what we're doing, keep our hearts in it. And at this time, is there any council member that has anything or have anything they would like to say? Okay, Mr. Hunter, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I appreciate that. I'm, to our council, Jimmy Graham, appreciate you saying that because it's hit the city of Phoenix City that's unemployed, or people want to be employed or not being employed, it's hit us pretty hard now. And we're suffering the same waves that a lot of people throughout the country are still suffering. But I would say, this to the general public, if you got to have some good people out there that want a good career and a good job, Phoenix City is a good place to work for. And we have openings. All you have to do is go to our HR department, right here on Broad Street, down from our main buildings, and see what they have there to put an application in on and try to work because, and our personnel we have here, I appreciate everything they're doing. They're working diligently to serve the public and do the job that was done. It's just that, like I say, Councilman Graham been dealing with this. A lot of people don't, even, I don't think they know this, you used to dispatch, you did? You dispatched. I've been dealing, it's my 30th year. He was dealing with this city forty, over forty-seven years ago, and he's, so you can move up through the system, I'm telling you, and you know, this is our, and you know, and I'm, you know, proud to say I know it. And, but, it's just a lot of things that people have evolved from, and coming in at this particular time, the retirement system we own, not just our retirement system, but it's the benefits that the city go above the retirement system to offer people and do for people, for lives and careers, for their family. It is a great place to market yourself and come into at this point in time. So, and like I say, I just want to thank everybody for doing what they're, trying to continue to work for the city and do what they're doing, and we will survive this. We'll get back to it. I just wish a lot of people out there would wake up right now, see the opportunities that's here, and take advantage of it, rule advantage of it. And thank you all for doing what you're doing, so we get out here and do the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Let's continue to give of ourselves, keep our hearts in it. And certainly, I can't go without saying this, but again, we thank Togar and CTBB for always bringing this to our citizens. And as we always say, when we go out, we're going to be a lifter and not a leaner. Thank you all so much for what you do and keep our hearts in it, and may God continue to bless all of us collectively as a community. Thank you all so much, and we do stand in jury.